This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
I'm going to call this regular City Council meeting to order, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise, face the flag. My pledge of allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll have Sandy read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with the Wisconsin State statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Demetri Martin. Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
All right, next up on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. These are items, all of these items, we would vote on these with one motion unless you would like to see one of these items moved to the regular agenda where we would just vote on that separate item individually. Anybody would like to see anything moved? If not, we'd need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Keeland, that we approve the Consent Agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy, you got something for us?
An addendum was uploaded to the city website adding number nine, new business, letter R, Council Appointment of Election Inspectors for the 2020-2021 election cycle. And that's it.
All right, so everything else is the same on there. We would need a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addendum item. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Non-agenda items and announcements, we have a presentation of the Wapaka Area Library Strategic Plan 2020 through 2024. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I'm just going to give you the highlights. I hope you had an opportunity to look at the plan. It was in your packet. And then I've also given you a print copy. I have print copies that have the, all of the appendices, if you're willing to go through all of that. I have that for you if you're interested. So, we started with a process that was afforded to us through our OWLS system. So, the Outage Gaming Wapaka Library System offered to allow us to be part of a cohort of six other libraries who were planning at the same time. And OWLS also helped to fund that process, as well as our foundation. We were working with WILS, which is a nonprofit organization that serves libraries in Wisconsin. And our team members included community members, Jean Boots, Tricia Duman, Holly Olson, Sue Abrahamson, and myself. And one of the first things we did was look at demographics. And the idea was, who do we serve? Who lives in our community? And who are the underserved? We also conducted a survey with our library patrons. Mostly patrons answered it. We do have a few people who were non-patrons who answered it. And the questions really were, how are we doing? What does the, what does the community think about the library? What is the library does that they like? Is there anything that we could do differently? And then we had community conversations. And those really led us to some meaty things that we were able to say, okay, now this is what the community needs. So, it really helped us to answer, what do we need? So then after compiling all of this information, we found that there were four areas of concentration. And the first one was access. We wanted to remove barriers, allow people to use us, make sure that it's easy in physical ways, in psychological ways perhaps, so that there may be barriers to service because of the way the library is perceived. And some of the activities include making changes to the parking lot and the book drops, increasing our library hours, and eventually eliminating overdue fees. Our next area of focus was marketing. So, we really want to be able to tell the library story, tell why we're important to the community, as well as to make sure people understand the things that we can do and that we do do, and the things that we make available. So, we also want to utilize a variety of media to get the word out. And we're including using the Chamber Calendar, not only to get the word out there, but to make sure that we're not conflicting with a bunch of other things that are happening in the community. The third area was library as connector. And while we thought of ourselves as that, that place where people come together, this became a much more formal and a real exciting thing for us to do in terms of something new. So, it is a bold new direction for us to think of us, ourselves, as the, the place where people connect to other agencies, the way that we can build partnerships, our outreach opportunities, work with community partners to promote connectedness. And one of the things we learned through a plunge that we participated in is that when people are connected, they're healthier. And so, this promotes health in our community. You can also see that people who are connected do less things that are harmful to themselves. So, there's less drug abuse, there's less alcohol use. So, connectedness is a huge part of what we're going to be really concentrating on in the next four years. And we want to provide opportunities for our residents to feel more connected. So, those programs want to build community. We're going to try and provide more outreach. So, the library will go to where the people are. Our school connectedness, we plan on making that even stronger. And we want to be that place of learning, no matter the age. So, lifelong learning is a part of that connectedness as well. Another piece is that we want to become a trauma-informed library, with the bigger goal in mind that we can lead our community to become a trauma-informed community. The last area of focus is inclusive services. So, the DPI has a new initiative that talks about how to make sure that all people, regardless of sex, or race, or ability, or disability, are welcome in the library, feel welcome in the library, and can use the services that we provide. This is such a new initiative that we really didn't have time to get into it during the planning process. So, we've created a committee within our, within our team that is working on those pieces of the inclusive services. And so, this new organization, our little team that's working on it, is really going to go through the process of, of the initiative set up by the DPI, and to help make those changes to make our library more inclusive. That was kind of a quick overview, but I'd entertain any questions that anyone has. And it looks so nice because OWLS has a graphic designer on their staff, and we were able to just send our raw data, and they made it come, they made it into this, this document that looks so professional. So, that, we pay for the cost of the paper for that.
Thank you, Peg. Any questions? Thank you for the update. All right, we'll place that on file. Let's move on then to... We have a comprehensive plan and zoning code update. Andrew is here tonight, so, Andrew?
I put together a few slides to go through. I've got it on that projector. I don't know how easy that is to clip on, if it's going to take-
Justin, can you help him?
Is it?
All right, Peg.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I heard you got a new TV for the conference room. What's that? So, you got to put it in. That thing is huge. And they've come down and brought so much.
Three, that's where it's supposed to be.
It's easy.
One time Josh isn't here.
Is he in the back?
Probably.
Well, let's let Peg, let's let Peg battle it for a while. Once she starts sweating, then we'll get Josh. So, that was sure a good victory by the Packers, wasn't it? Just trying to... We're on TV, so you got it.
Yes, it was. Finally.
I'll just maybe get started, then if it comes up, I can hit a few highlights.
Okay, thank you.
As a recap, so I was just going to give an update on the comprehensive planning update and the zoning code update process. And I guess, so we have two projects here. Will be, the city staff will be leading the comprehensive plan update, really over the next 13 months. And our goal is to get that finished by December of 2020. And then we have the zoning code, thank you. And then we have the zoning code update. We've got a consultant on board for that, Jeff Sanders, Community Planning and Consulting, who will be taking the lead on that. Rhonda will be doing the GIS mapping as part of that, and developing a new zoning district map. And then Jeff Sanders will be developing the text. Both of these projects will be sort of coordinated underneath the Community Planning and Development Department, Community Development Department, with myself and Aaron. And I'll just kind of walk through here real quick. The comprehensive plan is really, you know, it's, comprehensive plans are intended to address a number of different topics: transportation, community facilities, economic development, as identified or stipulated in the Wisconsin State statutes. Historically, these things, the Wisconsin passed a smart growth law in 1899, and a lot of communities came out of that process and did these big plans, we call them like phone book plans, that are so big and so thick that even a planner rarely opens these. So, we're going to try to, through this process, I don't know if we'll get something quite as nice as what Peggy's ended up with here, with the strategic plan, but we are going to try to end up with a much smaller document that maybe is somewhere like on the order of this Wapaka Riverfront Park Master Plan you completed. So, we're hoping to have a much smaller document by the end of this process. And as part of that, we'll be looking at a number of the different sort of topics up here, and maybe reorganizing the document a little bit. We'll be doing that over the next 13 months. The zoning code update over the next six to eight months, the goal is to finish that next summer. Some of the key issues that we've heard so far, just in, as we've kind of started in this process, talking to people, housing, economic development, some of the corridors, like the Fulton Street corridor, we want to take a little closer look at in terms of thinking about future land use, in light of some of the changes occurring out there. And then, I think for a lot of these key issues, and certainly a lot of the goals and objectives of the plan, we're going to be able to draw pretty heavily on a lot of these documents that have been recently completed. So, the strategic plan here actually has a lot of, I think, really good, relevant information. I brought some of these other plans you guys have done the last few years, the Riverfront Park Master Plan, the Wapaka Downtown Plan, the Downtown Vision Plan, you've got a downtown parking study, there's an Arts and Culture Plan. So, there's a lot of documents in here that we'll try to distill down and identify relevant goals and objectives for the city's overall comprehensive plan. In addition to that, I'm going to be working with Aaron to try to integrate some of the priorities from your strategic planning process into this comp plan as well, so that those are aligned. We have a work plan we put together, it's fairly detailed, it's three or four pages, kind of includes all the tasks up on the timeline here. And that, we're developing a webpage on the website, which, that'll have the work plan and a ti, a more, a very detailed timeline that we've put together. But I just want to kind of illustrate some of the key tasks here as we go through this process. I'll be coordinating the project. We'll be doing a series of little newsletters that we'll get out every other month to keep people abreast of what's going on. We'll also have a project website and some other social media channels, take advantage of the technology to get the word out. Our first step is really understanding kind of existing conditions, what are the trends, what are the things going on in the community? And then as we sort of educate people and have some discussions on what some of the key trends are, we'll get community input to help us identify priorities, goals, and objectives. We'll then draft a plan around those, and then finalize and adopt the plan by next December. It's a little, that's just kind of a high-level overview of the comprehensive plan. I'm going to just, regarding the zoning code update, we're going to be having an initial meeting with Plan Commission tomorrow night to go over the zoning code update, and kind of, that'll get into more depth in terms of that process, and expectations, and meeting dates, and kind of mechanics of that with Plan Commission. On January 6th, we'll have a kickoff meeting with the public, that'll actually be a joint meeting with, with one of the comprehensive plan workshops. So, we'll try to, try not to over-meeting people to death by combining these meetings. And we're also going to be doing that with some of the strategic planning meetings as well. And then Jeff will be having a stakeholder workshop in March. Phase two is really putting that ordinance document together. There's a number of objective amendments that have to be updated just to meet state and federal statutory requirements. Laws have changed since you last did your zoning code update, I think, 13, 15 years ago. And then you'll add subjective amendments, where maybe we take a look at some areas that, you know, where maybe zoned, single-family residential, but because of changing land uses, maybe they're more appropriate for a higher intensity use, like a multifamily. Or maybe you've got, in certain areas, too much commercially zoned land, you may want to look at changing those districts, or allowing for different types of uses in areas, newer areas of the city. And like I said, we'll work with Rhonda and staff to update the zoning map. And then phase three for the zoning code update, we'll have, this is next May and next June, we'll have a first draft working session with Plan Commission to sort of, really, that'll be a long session to go through in depth. And then we'll do a presentation out to the public and to council. And then phase four is going through that approval and adoption process. And then Jeff will be updating some of the application forms and guides. I put together just a few little slides on some demographic stuff that started to get a little depressing. I'm not going to go into any great depth on these, but I did, I did run a few calculations just on population growth trends, came up with a low, medium, and high estimate, and noted population change since 2000. For the cities, minus 2.9%. For the state as a whole, it's plus 2.2%. The gray bar there, that the higher estimate projection is based on the Department of Administration's projections they did back in 2013. I've kind of come up with a low and a medium estimate there, based on the rate of population change over the last 10 years, looking at census data, and then applying that out to 2040 for, so I've got kind of a low, medium, and a high estimate. I think that, but in a nutshell, you know, I think, you know, you're going to be struggling to maintain population. And, and I think if we get creative and address housing, we could probably, maybe we can hit that larger number. But the population forecast is fairly flat, the low and medium estimates are pretty flat. One of the big changes beyond just looking at the big numbers, I think, is just persons per household, and this is a national and state trend, but the number of people per household is really on the decline, and especially here. And so, you just see the, I think I read a statistics somewhere that said only like 20% of homes are going to be single, are going to be traditional sort of families with homes, with children living them, in them in the next 10 years or something. So, just the complexity and the look of what your housing stock looks like, what your neighborhoods look like, and how we respond to that in terms of, the comprehensive plan needs to address this, some of these trends. And the shrinking household size is kind of a big one. Not really going to look at that so much, just, just get to this next one. This was the Wapaka County Population Pyramid, which I'll do one of these for the city as well, but this one I just grabbed off the internet. This is looking at 2020, basically now, is the solid bars, and then 2040 are the dash bars. And it's just kind of showing that population pyramid, so you can see over the next 20 years, really, all of your age cohorts from zero to four, all the way through 65 to 69 are shrinking, are projected to shrink. And then obviously your age cohorts, you know, 70, 74, and then the older ones are growing, so no big shocker there. So, we're going to try to figure out how we can sort of buck the trend on some of this stuff as we dig into the comp plan and the strategic plan. And I think that's kind of one of the overall focuses for the comp plan, and thinking about economic development, how do we create a community that's attractive to young, to younger families, to balance out the natural aging that's occurring. And so, I think that aligns with a lot of stuff I've actually read through in, in the strategic plan for the library. And I think that'll probably be one of the focuses of the plan update, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Andrew. All right, let's move on then. Next up is public input. This is for non-agenda items. If anybody would like to speak to the council, or staff, or both, on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less.
Randall Meyer, 205 South Division Street. My intention tonight is to read a statement. Within that statement is a question for the council, then I'll submit this statement into the minutes for this meeting. On Tuesday, November 19, 2019, I spoke at the Common Council Meeting Agenda 7B Public Input, tonight. On Tuesday, December 3, 2019, I am speaking at the Common Council Meeting Agenda, same agenda, 7B. I am speaking again tonight as a follow-up to my previous comments from the last council meeting. At last, at last month's meeting, I posed a question to the Common Council. The question was, are the, are the City of Wapaka Code of Ordinances being enforced because you don't want to do it, or because you can't do it? I asked the question then, I ask the question now. At this time, would anybody on the council care to answer my question?
This is public input only.
Okay. If not, my answers are, if you don't want to do it, do it anyway. If you can't do it, then find a way, such as hiring additional city employees. The purpose of my attendance at the last two Common Council meetings is to ask for, request, the City Council or elected officials to hold the city departments and employees accountable, especially when it comes to reinforcing the City of Wapaka Code of Ordinances. I did not, nor do I, I vote for elected, elected officials who govern by business as usual, status quo, this is how it's always done, this is how it is, et cetera, principles. We can all, you can all do better than that for a better city and city government. The Wapaka city government should be proactive. I see, I see this city as reactive, not proactive. The City of, the Wapaka City Government should be proactive before the fact, and not reactive after the fact. Enforce the City of Wapaka laws, rules, codes, ordinance, like you are supposed to, before someone gets hurt or dies. Every, up to this point, every city department or employee I have talked to has said to me, if I see a violation, to fill out and file a, or file a complaint. I should not have to do this. This is on the city, not me. The city should enforce violations, not have citizens filling out reports about someone or something that has already happened. This is a reaction to a violation that has already occurred. This is not a good way to conduct city business. So, I end by saying my recommendation to the Common Council is to step up and do the right things. The citizens of the City of Wapaka want, need, and deserve this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to give public input? Public input, please step up to the podium, give your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move on. Unfinished business, we have a couple of ordinances that we carry, that are on their second reading. The first one is ordinance number 0819. This is an ordinance amending Section 17.310 Signs of the Municipal Code of the City of Wapaka. Aaron?
Yes, this is the ordinance that, I believe this is just the administrative duty in adding that, the, we left a district off. I apologize, I was not ready for this one. We left a district off when it was created, for the county shop out there, when the new zoning district was created. We just simply left the sign regulations off of, off of our chart, so this was just adding that to it. This is our second reading. Nothing changed from last meeting on this.
Okay, and Clerk's Office has not heard from the public at all on this, or any one?
I've not.
Okay. All right, so we're, would be looking for approval of this ordinance? Anybody? Motion by Peterson?
Second.
Second by Keeland, that the council adopts ordinance number 0819. This is an ordinance amending Section 17.310 of the Signs of the Municipal Code of the City of Wapaka. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next is the ordinance number 1219. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Wapaka Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan, also the second reading.
Yep, this is again to amend the comprehensive plan to match the planned development by the SCS Timber Ridge Apartments. Again, second reading, comp plan, state statutes say that the comp plan has to match the zoning, which is just what that is doing.
All right, so again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve, ordinance number 1219.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Fair, that the council adopts ordinance 12-19. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Wapaka Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, another ordinance here on the second reading. This is ordinance number 14-19, 2019. This is an ordinance amending Section 17.201 parent 2 of the Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wapaka entitled Amendments to District Maps to facilitate development of SCS Timber Ridge Apartments LLC Development Project, and place certain requirements on the project per the preliminary plan.
Again, this one is paired with the last one. This is just changing the zoning from what was commercial to multi-unit housing, which is the presentation that was given, I believe it, actually Plan Commission, last Plan Commission meeting. Again, just to facilitate the development plan for SCS Timber Ridge Apartments. We have heard no comments since the last meeting.
All right, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve this ordinance.
Move to approve, ordinance number 1419-19, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Keeland. Discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next- Okay, next up, we have new business. This has to do with Resolution Number 1443, 2019. This is a resolution adopting public participation plan. Andrew?
I can just briefly comment on that.
Thank you.
We have, as part of that comprehensive plan process, you're required to publish a public participation plan that basically just explains to the public how they can be involved in this process. And so that plan has been put together, it's probably in your packet, and will be posted on our project website. And I'll be working with Aaron to facilitate many of these public input sessions in the next several months.
Okay. Aaron, anything else you want?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. I guess I'll just add that we had a conversation today, again, as a reminder, Andrew and Jeff and I, we're going to have a little joint meeting. Jeff and Andrew will be talking at tomorrow's Plan Commission on December 4. Andrew's going to do something similar, and Jeff's going to do something similar for the zoning code process. And then again, January 6 is the kickoff meeting. That's a community visioning workshop that'll cover both the comp plan and zoning code rewrite, and then March 9 is the stakeholder workshop. So those are the three, three big things coming up.
Great, okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
Move to approve, Resolution 1443.
Motion by Hagan, second by Hackett, that we approve Resolution Number 1443, 2019. Discussion?
I think they're, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I saw Andrew's handle up, I thought he wanted to say.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to put in a plug for the January 6. I think that meeting will be at the Danes Hall, and we'll get some refreshments and make it kind of fun and interactive, and you guys should come out, invite your neighbors, friends, and it's more fun the more people you have. So I think it would be a great opportunity to get people out and talk about some issues of relevancy to the city, create input both for the comp plan and for the strategic plan.
Hence the approval of the liquor license, I guess, right? Any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Next up, we have Wapaka School District Certified Survey Map for 905 10th Street. Is this you, Aaron?
It is. So if you guys go to page 88 in the packets, it shows really what you guys would know as the old bus garage property owned by the school district. They were looking to subdivide that into four different lots, again, on 10th and Columbia Street. As you can see, really no questions on lot lines except for, the one that's close is that in between Lot 3 and Lot 4. This required setback from buildings is 15 feet, that's about 17 six, and everything is in conformity. So really no, absolutely no concerns from a staff standpoint. This has gone through Plan Commission and came to council for recommendation of approval.
Okay, any questions for Aaron?
Which lot, now this is, which lot is the one that holds the building of a garage?
Yeah, so there's actually three separate buildings on it. There's one that was probably known as the bus garage, then there was that house that was used as an office, and then there was a separate building, which is in Lot 4, which was done like repair, maintenance type things, which we'll talk about here in one second. So three different buildings. If they were in non-conformity, they're still in non-conformity, but we're not, by creating these lot lines, we're not creating any more non-conforming structures or anything, if that answers your question.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second? We still haven't signed one. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Hackett, second by Olson, was it Olson? That council approves a certified survey map for the Wapaka School District located at 905 10th Street. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, going along with this, this is the special use permit for that property under Home and Away Ministries Incorporated.
Right, so, okay, thank you Mayor Smith. So this is a special use permit application, really from the school district, but actually from Home and Away Ministries as they were doing it in conjunction with the sale of that Lot 4 that we just talked about, Paul. And in this district, it's a B1 neighborhood district, under special use includes truck, garage, repair, and service. It's as this building has been used in my lifetime, as I can remember, really no different impact on the neighborhood. The one thing I will mention is that this is kind of, it's not their primary function of their organization, so for signage and things like that, they won't be able to put a sign up because it's just repairing their vehicles. But other than that, we have no concerns as a staff, from a staff standpoint, on granting that special use permit. It's gone through Plan Commission, and again, comes to council for approval.
Okay, so again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this special use permit.
Move to approve.
Motion by Fair, second by Hackett, that the council approves a special use permit for Home and Away Ministries Incorporated, acting on behalf of the school district, 905 10th Street. Any discussion?
I just have a couple of questions, and I do admit to being a little bit lacking in knowledge in our special use permits, but is this, is a special use permit required because of the activity they're doing? And how does that differ from, say, the old Churney Building where they could not get special use permit?
So the special use, in the zoning code, in the B1 district, truck, garage, repair, and service is listed as a special use, or it's allowed under special use. In other scenarios, it may not have been listed under a special use provision.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yep.
That was just one question.
He is so efficient that he answered all of my questions.
All right, any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up is looking at the approval of a multimodal grant application, and Justin and Aaron, I-
I'll take it.
You can start, and I can talk about what we almost did.
Yeah, well, Mr. Jensen, at the last council meeting brought forward the potential of going to applying for a multimodal grant. This is offered through WISDOT, it's a $75 million fund that focuses on multimodal travel, which is mostly bike, ped, rail, other types of travel then versus roadway. What Mr. Jensen brought forward was that multi-jurisdictional trail that kind of fell through the cracks. The other project we brought forward was potentially replacing the bridge back here in Riverview Park that spans the river from Cooper Street to Hidden Park. So basically what we have forward, or have in front of you tonight, is the application for that project to replace that bridge. So in the packet, memo is shown on page 122. Following that is the app on 123 and 125, that's the actual application, plus additional materials that would be submitted. The application is due this Friday, so upon approval, I would make sure that that would be turned in. Including the packet are pictures of the existing bridge showing the condition on page, I believe I got it 128, yep, is the pier. Basically, you can see it's worn out at the bottom, it's leaning, the deck is sagging. That's the reason why the, the bridge was shut down a number of years ago, well before my time here, working for the city. But that would be the bridge we'd be looking to replace. Also in there is the updated Riverview Park Plan. It starts on page 129 and goes all the way through 174. We won't review that again, it was adopted and reviewed by council in May of 2018. So working off of that latest adopted plan, in there was to replace this bridge. So that's where the application was geared towards, and then also the cost estimate that was developed. Following that, page 175 to 185 are examples of bridges that we could use. So they're in there just, just for review only, we're not set on anything. So with this application and this program, it, it could potentially provide up to a 90% cost share for the construction of the bridge. The estimate that I came up with was $910,000. I have a typo in my memo, I missed a zero after my comma, so it's not $910, it's $910,000. What that all includes is a brand-new bridge, a lot of concrete, grading, a bunch of sidewalk, and removing that old bridge as well. It also includes DOT review and some other miscellaneous costs. But again, applying for this grant does not mean that we'll receive funding, nor does it lock us into doing the project. Only if we accepted the funds would we have to then follow through with this project. I would anticipate that if we received funding and got up to that 90%, most certainly would bring it back to council here for, for approval of going through and following through with this project, and then we'd have to put it into our capital plan. At this point, it would be on the very far end of our five-year plan, so we'd put it out there five years, which would fit within this grant application window. You have six years to use the funds that is awarded to you, and most certainly when, if the project all forms, would come back for approval of a design and also a construction contractor. So I think it's, it's a good fund, it's something worthwhile to try. I already have the application pretty much done. It would take another couple of minutes just to submit it to DOT via an email, so I'm looking for action for approval of that. There's quite a bit of information in here, so I'll just open it up to questions.
Justin, one question, I'm just wondering about the timeline, and when would we know if we get the money or not, or get the grant?
I don't recall if there was a response period, was it February?
I honestly don't recall that either. It's a good question.
It'll be before June 30th, if that helps you. It'll be in this budget year, is what it'll be.
Yeah, I, I recall something like in February, knowing, springtime, say.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Aaron?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add to that, I know last meeting we talked about this as a kind of a two-application deal, and the other was that extension of the walking trail, it was that multi-jurisdictional or multi-municipal application. In looking at, it was Highway K in Dayton, King Road in Farmington, and then trying to get into our downtown area. Road right-of-way has made it very challenging in all of those areas, including our downtown area. We kind of went from Plan A to Plan B to Plan C and all the way to Plan D, and actually we were looking at the end at extending our walking trail, not to the, directly the downtown area, but up towards like Charles Wright Drive. If you remember, two or three years ago, when I was still with the Park and Rec Department, we talked about acquiring property, and I know Mr. Hackett remembers for sure. And connecting that neighborhood up there in the grocery store area to the walking trail, the high schools, South Park, so that resurfaced because of some costs that come associated with the people that were working on that grant and putting some numbers together, and plus kind of the unexpected turn of events with all the other municipalities. The county decided last week to submit something separate, which is understandable. We did get some numbers back on that for future planning, but right now we're not moving forward with that, as, as the end product looked much different than it did a month ago. So just an explanation on that.
Okay, and remember that this is just applying for the grant. If we were to receive the grant, then it would come back to council, first of all, to approve any kind of project, and then also to approve the grant once we receive it. And as Justin said too, it's a 90/10, so then we would be responsible for finding a way to, to pay for that 10%, whatever that amount ended up to be.
And it is possible, it says up to 90/10, so there's a possibility that it's 80/20. You know, those are conversations we can have as a council, as that's a word, so.
I'll make a motion we approve, applying for this grant.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, Chestnut, second by Chestnut, that we approve of staff submitting the 2020-21 multimodal local supplemental application for funds for the Walk Bridge in Riverview Park. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thank you, Justin. Aaron? Next up, we have contract for floodplain surveys. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So a few weeks back, I think beginning of November, we sent out an RFP, and this was a result of hearing from some business owners on Main Street, also actually going through that park plan survey a while ago, and seeing where the floodplain lies, and knowing what that floodplain does to some of our, our businesses on North Main Street, and actually on Water Street, and on, it would be East Fulton Street. A handful of those businesses or buildings lay in that floodplain, which means higher insurance premiums, which means when they're, if they're ever want to sell the building and someone's looking to get a mortgage on it, there are many more barriers for that, likely higher down payment, so on and so forth. So we wanted to look into what, you know, what could we do to alleviate some of these barriers for current and future building owners. Found out that there's two, two ways to address it. One is to shoot elevation surveys on each individual building, and that is the more cost-effective at this point, and then there's a whole trying to redraw the flood map, which is $50,000, $60,000. So we wanted to, we sent in an RFP to three different survey companies, got two back. One was from Caro Surveying Company, and one was from Point of Beginning, out of Stevens Point. Caro was the low bid at a maximum of $6,050, or 500 to 550 per site. It would be my recommendation that we take this, and you'll see a little later in the meeting, a little bit about our fund balance, but we've realized some deposits into our fund balance or increases over the last couple of years, and this is a one-time expenditure that, in my opinion, can help businesses, buildings, in an area that we feel is one of our greatest assets in the city, and that is our Main Street, and specifically North Main Street. So not only will we be helping our current business or building owners, but, but really all future business owners. Now, I will say this too, is that there's no guarantees, we could shoot elevations, and, and it does not mean that they're going to get taken out of the floodplain. These have been identified as ones that, that they believe have a good chance of coming out, and even if it doesn't come out, they will get provided elevation certificates, which can very likely lower insurance premiums, even if they're in the floodway. So if they are designated as being a candidate for coming out of the floodplain, we would then turn it over to the building owner and say, hey, just to let you know, this is the situation you're in, work with the surveyor to submit a letter of map amendment, it's a Loma application to FEMA, and then that would be on the building owner to take it from there. And that's about 100 bucks to, to work with the survey company to do that. So, so I guess that the action that we're looking for, or that I'm recommending, is to approve work with Caro Land Surveying to complete elevation surveys for the noted properties for an amount not to exceed $6,050. That would be out of the general fund balance. That would be out of the general fund balance.
Okay. Any?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut that the council enters into a contract for floodplain surveys with Carol Land Surveying for an amount not to exceed $6,050. Any discussion? Sandy O'Carroll?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Mary Fair?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Next up is the deer harvest. If you were listening to the radio today, you probably heard that the harvest in Opaquita County was down 27%. So, does that mean there's less deer, or did they move into the city of Opaquita? Segue into what Aaron's going to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So, over the past two years, as you know, the city has managed a deer harvest, and Mr. Hanson, Roger Hanson, our street superintendent, has been the coordinator of that, in my opinion, a perfect person for that. Nobody has the experience in regards for safety more than him. Looking to do the same thing this year. It came up actually a couple of times in one-on-one council meetings with our city council members, and that they think that this is something that may be worth looking into again. And we are bringing it forward now. Not much has changed from last year's request. Just to really quick go over the highlights in the memo, and that memo's on page 209 in your packet. We would work with Jake Freeze from the DNR, again, which is who issued the 20 tags in the past couple of years. And this year, the hunt period would be from January 15th to March 31st. The hunt would occur on large tracts of public and private lands, including the city airport, recycling center, cemetery, well, two off of Washington Street, Opaquita Country Club. Hunters can sign up for a tag on the city website, working with Josh on that. Signing up expresses interest, does not guarantee a tag will be issued, and priority will be given to landowners and local residents. Hunters would, must have a valid bow license. They also must purchase a $10 bow discharge permit from the police department, and those will have to get turned into Mr. Hanson. Those are good for two years, so if they purchased one last year and were a part of this, they should be good. As I said before, 20 deer tags will be acquired. This is not a trophy hunt. It is simply to control the herd. And again, no, no deer with antlers will be taken, not that they'd have any left at that time anyway. An informational meeting will be held once the hunters are selected. Cost to process the deer will be at the hunter's expense. If they do not want the deer, Mr. Hanson will process and donate to the breadbasket. Background checks will be done on all hunters, and the agreement attached to this memo will be signed by the city and the hunter themselves. So, the recommended action is just to approve the city-managed deer harvest for 2019 to be run as it has last year.
Move to approve.
I'll second, but I wanted to say 2020, not 2019.
You are 100% right, Mr. Peterson. 2020. Thank you for the correction.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that the council enters in and approves of the city-managed deer harvest for 2020. Discussion?
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right. Next up, we have a new voice here, youth program fund. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this youth program fund is something that came about through the budget process. And myself, Aaron, and Kathy worked together over a few months to create this fund, and if they would like to chime in, they can as well. Essentially, what we're trying to do is create more transparency within our youth fund and our agreements with townships and the school district, and just being more open and transparent with those partners as we move forward with our youth program agreements and youth program fund. So, we worked on just separating expenses just for youth programs as part of this process. We created this fund, and you can see the memo is on page 213, so the fund is on 214, or, yeah, 214 and 215, I believe, is where it's at. Yes. So, you can take a look at those numbers, and hopefully you had a chance to look at that. And if you have questions tonight, we can talk about those at that point. The youth program fund was brought to Park and Rec Board on November 7, 2019, and was passed by them at that time. It's been presented to townships and park board, and, and I think the school district has seen it a little bit as well.
School district has seen it, yes.
Has seen it as well. And so, we think the creation of this fund just helps us move forward with future youth program discussions, as we continue to discuss different options moving forward. So, what we'd be requesting tonight from the common councils, just to approve the youth program fund with the revenues and expenses shown in the attached youth program fund.
So, Andrew, before we make a motion on this, just explain to them too that this has no budget effect at all?
Correct. It's just pulling out the expenses from our normal operation budget, putting them in a separate fund that go towards youth programs, so that we can be more transparent on what is being spent on those. So, it does not have any effect.
Okay. Kathy?
Just to qualify what you're seeing in this youth program budget is, you're, would just be approving the 2020 budget request. The information for 19 and prior years is just historical, and it was included in the general fund. So, I'm not, we're not pulling those costs out or doing anything different. It's just for 2020. But, another reason why it qualifies for a special revenue fund is that it doesn't have more than 50% funded by tax levy. So, a special revenue fund has to have special revenues to be able to be classified that, and it has to be more than 50%. So, by having the township contributions and the inner other, intergovernmental revenues and the fees that make up more than the $102,000 of levy that would be transferred to this fund in the year. So, we're showing that it does qualify as a special revenue fund.
And not to complicate this at all, but Kathy, we have done this with other department, library for one.
Library, correct. We have the airport. We have the adult programs are in a special revenue fund. So, what this does is it helps in segregating out the, the costs and the revenues associated with, so any, any funds that are remaining at the end of the year, any excess revenues would stay within that fund. And if it does run into negative cash, the general fund would have to advance money towards it. But, we're, we're confident that the budget with what we've pulled out would be what is anticipated to be a profitable venue.
One of the things, and I met with Andrew and Aaron and Kathy, and they talked about this program fund, and as we went through the fund, they made certain assumptions as far as like how much percentage of, for example, Josh Peterson's wages would go towards this youth program versus the rest of the parks and the recreation and stuff like that. And, you know, you could, you could question their percentages, although I, I think I felt pretty comfortable with it. And, and I think the one thing that I got out of this, which I think is being transparent is really cool, is, is that we weren't sure if we were getting enough money from the townships to cover our youth programs. And this shows that we are not getting more than we deserve, but we are getting exactly what we should be getting based on these expenses. So, I think that's, that's good. That should make us feel better about what we've been receiving in the past too, and as we move forward. The one thing that, and, and again, not to muddy the waters, the one thing that this youth program fund doesn't do for youth is it doesn't take care of that issue where we have youth that cannot participate in our programs because they're cost prohibitive, like the Town of Lind, who does not participate in the youth programs. And, and then we have the outlying communities also too that, that can participate, but it, it really is cost prohibitive. Right, Justin? Right. Andrew? Did you want to say anything else?
No. That's correct, though. I mean, you, you pretty much spot on on most of that stuff. But, if there's any further questions, we can definitely answer those.
I have one. Oh, Andrew, would this help us facilitate talking to the Town of Lind? Is this something they wanted to see, or they don't really want to go down the road, period? I mean, or did they want some hard facts? I guess that's why I'm asking, if this will help us with them or not?
You know, I, I personally think it, it could help, but I think we've kind of asked that, and I don't know, Aaron, you want to speak on that? I'm more than willing to go talk with them and, and show them these numbers and try to work on something to try to help alleviate that issue that we have in the Town of Lind. But, I'm, I'm not sure if it will help that much.
Scott, when we first kind of rolled this out to the town chairs, Lind was in the room.
Well, they were.
Mr. Gall was in the room. And so, yeah, so he, he took all this in, and I think it, you know, it certainly doesn't hurt, but I don't think it gets us to a point where we've solved our problem.
So, yeah, okay.
I think we can certainly continue those conversations and continue brainstorming on how we may be able to do that, but this doesn't get us there.
It could help us, and we're hoping it will help us if we continue to have this discussion with the Fund 80 program in the future, if we go back to the school district. This will certainly help us here. It, I don't, in defense of the Town of Lind, quite honestly, they are split into two school districts. They have about 60% of their, their residents live in the Opaquita School District, and about 40% live in Wyegah. And under our program, 100% of the Town of Lind residents would have to pay to participate in this program. And is that really fair when 40% of those students probably are participating in Wyegah? So, they have a, they have a tough situation, and that's why we are, that's why we really thought Fund 80 was the answer, to tell you the truth. So, we'll keep working towards that goal. Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody want to make a motion to approve this fund?
Both to approve.
Second. Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that the council approves the youth program fund with the revenues and expense shown just for 2020 budget only. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Andrew, thank you. Next up, we have our, our budgets for our enterprise funds, our sewer, water, and Opaquita Online. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My report is on page 215 of the packet. We separated out from the operating budgets, the utility fund and the utility funds for water, sewer, and online. These are on a different type of an accounting, but they do still have, need a budget to be passed. We are looking under the water utility fund to hire an additional operator in 2020. This is needed to continue to maintain the meter services and to continue the changeover on the new meter reading system. We still have 1,700 services that need to be put on cellular transmitters and 500 meters to be replaced that are on a reader that, if you had a, a screen on your computer and it was just all gray, and you just remembered where that button was, that's where we are with this reader. So, we have got to get these 500 meters replaced before that screen is totally faded out, and we cannot read. We would have to go and manually go in there and read those meters. So, it's the last step we need to get everybody so that they can be more conservative consumers and be able to see their usage on the web. So, we're, we need to get everybody over that. This does also include a 3% increase to the employees. There's no increase in the health insurance, minimal increases in Wisconsin retirement. The capital improvement projects are attached after the budget, and those were borrowed for in 2018. So, this is the last year that we have to use up those funds, or we have some money in reserves for the smaller part, projects. We will be applying again to the Public Service Commission for a simplified rate case. The maximum increase that we can receive under this rate case is 3%. It's up to, once we submit our annual report, it's up to the Public Service Commission to determine whether or not we qualify for a rate case. This would again be in July, so it'd be half a year. It's necessary to continue to maintain the operations. As people conserve water, our costs don't go down. We just don't generate enough revenue to do that, even though people are conserving The sewer utility is, again, very simple, just capital improvements, current through, through the borrowing that was in 18, excuse me, 18 in reserves. There is no additional borrowing. And the online fund, as Josh presented at the Personnel Committee, the whole, was to continue the expansion of services into cities outside of, into outside the cities areas, and would hire that full-time technical position when his parameters were met. So, it does, the budget does include that. However, he would be bringing that back at, when he meets his threshold for revenue generation before he would come and hire that. Otherwise, that's what the budget is for the utilities.
Justin, anything you want to touch on to either one of those, your two funds?
I think Kathy summed it up pretty well. The funds themselves are staying healthy. We're building up our reserves up to levels that are recommended by state agencies. And so, financially, we're doing well, and also for emergency reasons, stability within the city, that's being maintained. The, the simplified rate case that we're looking to do again this year is anticipated to be a 3% increase on just the usage. Done that in the past, correct?
No, it's on, it's on in the public, it's on in all the, all the fees.
On all the fees?
It's across.
Okay. Okay. Excuse me then.
It's in the sewer.
Yep.
There's no increase.
But, we're, we're planning, we've been wanting to do that, is take the little baby steps, small incremental increases to everyone's bills, versus what we see in, in other municipalities where they put it off, and all of a sudden, 10, 15 years down the road, all of a sudden, they have an increase of 10 to 35% increase. So, that's the plan there with those increases. So, all in all, we feel like we're on the right track. The funds are increasingly becoming more and more stable.
All right. So, you have three budgets in front of you. Like I said, these are all revenue generating funds. We'd be looking for a motion to approve these budgets for 2020.
Move to, second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that the council approves the fiscal Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that the council approves the fiscal year 2020 sewer water and Wapaka online budget. Any discussion? Sandy O'Callro?
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next up, as promised, even though the dollar amounts are in the, in the fiscal 2020 budget that you approved at our last meeting, there were some personnel changes and some, some other things that we thought that should be handled on an individual basis, and that's why they're at this meeting tonight. And I think, Kathy, you want to talk, first of all, about the, the mayor's and the older person's proposed wage increase?
Sure. Unpaged, 220, 238 is an ordinance, is the ordinance that would need to be adopted for setting the salary of the mayor and the older persons effective with the first payroll after the 20, April 2020 general election. So you're currently not, if you vote for this, is not giving yourself a raise unless the public reelects you to your position. What we did was look at the surrounding area and what the, they're paying for their, either town chair or mayor, and recommending that the mayor's salary be raised to $12,250 per year, and older persons to $4,850 per year. So.
And Sandy, do you want to, I'll, I'll take comments here, or we'll take a motion, whatever way you want to do it, but just, do you want to explain the procedural, what we're, we're trying to do here tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So I looked up the state statutes. We need a three-fourths vote of all the members of the council to pass this, but what we need to do tonight is to waive the second reading because this-
The first reading.
The first reading, excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
It says, "The compensation for an elective city office shall be established before the earliest time for filing nomination papers for the office." So that means the five of you, plus the mayor, that are filing papers have to have, your deadline is, is January 7th of 2020 at 5:00 p.m. We meet again January 7th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m.
Yeah.
So you have to have these in, we have to have this in place for it to take effect in April of 2020 for the people on the ballot. So.
So hence the reason why we are waiving the first reading. If you're uncomfortable with waiving the first reading, we can have a council meeting between now and January 7th, if you wanted to, to wait to approve this, but you have the opportunity to vote for it tonight if you'd like to, by waiving the first reading of this ordinance, and then just ratifying it after that. So I know, Steve, you asked to make some comments, so.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion, and I don't know if this is the time to make a motion, that the mayor and the older persons receive a yearly raise in pay based on what the employees of the city get. And this would make it so that the city council wouldn't have to wait 20 years to get a wage increase.
I did not see anything in state statutes that prohibits it, so.
So basically, what he's saying, if I understand this right, just so in my mind, I'm going to say it out loud. So when we get to the 2021 budget, if we give the employees a 3% pay increase, he's saying that then council would also get that same 3% pay increase.
And that would include the mayor, too?
Well, thank you.
I think the problem that you run into, then, is if you're voting on employee pay raises, by implication, you're voting yourself a pay raise within that elect-
So then you would have to, the people that are up for reelection, if they get reelected, they would get it. The people that aren't up for, they have to wait till they get reelected to get home.
Could get complicated.
Just like you're doing right now.
That's how it is now. Right.
You, it wouldn't change anything that way.
Yeah, I, your point is well taken, Tom, because we are not all reelected in the same year, so I, I, it does make it a little bit more difficult, but in essence, they would end up with the same pay, right? I mean, because it would be every other year. But you, you're right, you can't, that makes sense. You can't vote yourself a pay increase unless you're elected to that position, again, after you vote on that pay raise. So it could be worded, I don't know. I, I don't know how many people are interested in it, first of all, before I think too much.
The ordinance is written the way it is now. It doesn't include that. If we include that, we have to come back with another ordinance before the 7th.
Correct. Yeah, and there's probably no urgency to this either, because it wouldn't start until 2021, after April election in 2021. So I guess this is food for thought, and we can put it on the agenda for, for a future meeting?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Thank you, Paul, yeah, for clarifying that.
So are we taking this off the table, then, now? No?
What, Scott?
What?
Yeah, he's, it's not here.
So we're going to deal with what we see here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I-
But I just wanted to bring it up for thought, because I, I've, I've been on council now, I don't even know, 16 years or something like that, and I've never had a raise. And I just think that's kind of ridiculous.
Are we, are we in comment session, Mayor, or are we going to wait till we-
Well, we haven't made a motion yet, so we can do whatever we want here. You can either make a motion or just talk.
We need two motions, don't we? One to waive it and one to-
Right, right. We'd have to waive it first.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead, Scott.
Well, in all deference to Steve, I don't know if the years, I did some research myself, and I don't know, according to some of the things I've saw from cities and villages of our similar size, I'm talking Berlin, Cottage Groves, you know, Hills Course, Mayville, right around 6,000, they hover right around our compensation rate. And I guess, I don't know if we, you know, everybody has their own opinion about, we haven't had it for 20 years, or I don't know if we spend enough physical time in this chamber to maybe warrant, like Steve said, getting a 3% every year. I, I just feel like it, we're in the ballpark now, and I, I'd rather see this money that's allocated for our raise go to, to the police department. They're going to be using some money to get a new police officer and a PS SLO officer, and I guess, I think we're fairly compensated right now. And I'm not talking about the mayor here. He's here many, many, many hours more than we are, and so I, I guess, I feel on our side, I think I'm fine with where we're sitting, but that's my opinion.
Okay, any other comments? Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Again, first, we got to make, if you want to waive the first reading, you would have to make that motion first. Sorry.
I will make the motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Keeland, second by Mayo, that we waive the first reading of ordinance number 1519. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, so next up, then, would be ordinance number 1519.
I will move that we approve ordinance number 15-19.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that the council adopts ordinance number 1519, an ordinance setting the salary of the mayor at $12,250, and the older persons at $4,850, although Wapaka, Wapaka County Council effective the first payroll after the general election in April of 2020. Any discussion? Sandy O'Callro?
Scott Pachetzky.
No.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one no, motion carried.
Okay, and so these are the remaining six items that we talked about, that we were going to bring forward to this meeting. When Kathy gets done talking about them, we'd like to do it all in one motion, unless you want to see any of these individually picked out of there. But let's just listen to Kathy, and I think Aaron might have some comments, too, but go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. The first item is the second police school liaison officer, of which 75% funding is coming from the Wapaka School District. That leaves 25% that is funded within the 2020 budget for the police department. The second one is a cost of living increase for all city employees, except for seasonal, of 3%, but we're also carving out the custodial staff. We're trying to bring their rate of pay up to where the, I believe, the Wapaka County, we're trying to get them up there, Justin?
Other municipalities and our county.
So by the three, their rate of pay is so low that 3% doesn't give them enough lift, so we're going to give them a 50 cent per hour rate. The other one is the job description for the deputy clerk and the promotion of Barb Robert to that position effective 1-1-2020, with a salary adjustment of $7,400. Now, Barb's position is still divvied out between the general fund and the water sewer utility fund, because she still does, in part of her job description, a little, continuing with collection of the utility bills. So that increase in the general fund would, was about $2,400 to each fund. The other item is the funding of a half-year for a police drug officer in the amount of $37,875. This half-year isn't because this is all we can afford, this is for procedural reasons with the police department. Is that correct, John?
That's right.
So because of the hiring of the second police school liaison officer first, getting that officer through field training, it's a little bit harder, harder on the department to have two officers in field training. So they're looking at a half-year hiring that second, second officer in June, I believe, end of May, in June. The other one would be the reorganization of the community services department, and Aaron, you want to highlight those?
Yeah, the thing we're talking about tonight is the raise and really job reclassification for Elizabeth Halsworth. She's currently our code enforcement off, code compliance officer, and she has recently become certified for in building inspection areas, UDC, HVAC, and building, and she will continue that, as we've talked about in past meetings. This lift to $25 per hour on January 1 will bring her into a competitive pay rate with similar communities, as shown in the memo on page 240 in your packet. This is a part of a larger overall plan for the community development office over the next three to four years, so.
All of these, and then I just want to touch on where we, how we, how we're funding all this.
Okay.
The biggest thing is, is that we've had increases in, in revenues, and that's the reason why we're able to, to afford it at this time. Our levy was $33,000 that we could increase it by. We had $55,000 in transportation aids. Our interest earnings is, are higher, and so are the building permit fees, which is helping to fund all of these positions with just a $43,000 transfer from fund balance. So that's how we're funding these personnel costs this year.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did we list the promotion of the labors, of Zach and-
Sure. Do you want to touch on that, Justin?
So Brogan Kenzoria and Zach Thorne are not our two most recent, but they've been with us for a little over a year now, and they were the, among the first two on our latest pay scale. So with that, they started at a laborer position, where traditionally they would have started at like a skilled operator position or operator. Over the years, they are to build up, but their performance has warranted that they get bumped up quicker. So what we're recommending is to promote them into an operator position, which would increase their responsibilities into more equipment, more individual work, and less labor-intensive work.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else? All right, so like I said, if it's okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve all of those six items. Anybody would like to make that motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fair, that the council approves of the recommendations that Kathy has set forth, as well as Justin. Is there any, and this is for the 2020 budget. Is there any discussion? Sandy O'Callro?
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, but you're up again here, Kathy, employee sick banks.
One of the things that we have heard in the few years that, five years that I've been in this position, is, is when somebody retires, how it's such a detriment to the department because of the fact that some of these older employees have these sick banks built up because of the difference in the benefit changes that we've gone over the years. So we haven't taken anything away from the employees. So what I am recommending is that we do a payout of, at the, this year, of the four sick banks that these employees had, when we adjusted the rate from unlimited to 1,200 hours. So these employees that presented amount to $46,822, the general fund would have an impact of just over $39,000, and we would fund that also through fund balance, or if our revenues are higher, it would just come out of our operating budget this year. The water utility, because it is on a different accounting method as an accrual, each year the employees' sick banks are accounted for within the, the fund. So it would just be pulling from that, that fund, that liability- So it would just be pulling from that, that fund, that liability that's out, that's out there for compensated absences in the water utility. So I'm looking for payout of these at their 2019 rate, and that these amounts would then be put into their health reimbursement accounts and only allowed to be used for section 125, their insurance premiums, when they, when they leave service with the city.
Okay, so you follow what Kathy's trying to do here? I mean, obviously, this is a liability that does not show up on our balance sheet, so we're getting rid of a liability that's not seen there, and I think that's, that's good, obviously. So not only that, but a few years back, when we decided to, instead of directly pay these employees out, we were putting it into their health, health reimbursement account, and as Kathy said, they can only be used for health purposes after they leave, or basically after they're at retirement age. So it's, it's all accounted for in that way. Okay? Any questions? Everybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that the council pays out this, these accrued employee sick pay. Any discussion? Sandy O'Callaghan?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Well, you're trying to compete with Justin tonight here. Next up, we have approval of a 2019 capital improvement line of credit borrowing. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. We did change the way we borrow for our short-term capital. Last year, we went to a line of credit that we have with Farmer State Bank. It's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar line of credit, and each year we borrow on it and pay it within thirteen months so that it's kind of like paying it on a credit card. So these are items that do not have a life expectancy longer than the five to ten years that we have on our large bonds. So this is like the squad cars, the computer equipment, the small stuff, or they're under twenty-five thousand dollars. So the list is attached of what council has already approved during the year, and I'm just looking to pull a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars on the line of credit at Farmers. Next month, I will be paying the hundred and seventy-six thousand that we borrowed last year. So it's just a rotating, it never has any more than what the one-year projects have as a balance.
Okay. So we'd be looking for a motion to use the line, line of credit to pay off our capital equipment improvements of, for the 2019 projects. Would you like to make a motion?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Hackett, that the council approves of using the Farmer State Bank line of credit in the amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand for the financing of the 2019 capital equipment improvements, as presented on page 246 of your packet. Any discussion? Sandy O'Callaghan?
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have a development agreement with Little Wolf Development, and they're asking that that be terminated. So Kathy, you want to explain?
Sure. Staff met with Mr. Bickley of EGS Properties, also known as Little Wolf Automotive there. They built that second business, autumn business over in TIF number four on Western Avenue. He's came to us because he is not thinking that he's, he's not going to be able to get the, the level of increment value that his incentive is based on. His incentive level is four hundred and fifty thousand, the assessor has him assessed at three hundred and sixty. So he doesn't feel that he is going to be able to make up that difference and to be, instead of being into a penalty with that, he's just going to forego the forty thousand dollars that he would have gotten in incentive if he ever got to his four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've never given him any of his incentive, so he's asking that the agreement be terminated and be released. So I don't see, I don't see anything, the, the TIF four is a very profitable TIF, it's doing very well, so if it doesn't have to give out forty thousand dollars.
And he's paying property taxes, so.
And he's still paying property taxes.
So we've given him nothing?
We have given him nothing.
Okay.
On this project? Yeah.
Yeah, he, he did not, he paid for his sewer, this was to kind of reimburse him for his sewer hookup, and instead, he's just saying that's okay, so.
Okay. So we would need a motion to approve this termination.
Move to appro- move to approve to release the developer's agreement for Little Wolf Automotive.
Second.
Easy to say, isn't it? Motion by Hagan, second by Mayo, that the council terminates the existing development agreement with EGS Properties LLC, better known as Little Wolf Automotive, at 323 Southwestern Avenue. Any discussion? Sandy O'Callaghan?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, we have license report number 1474. Again, this is a bartender's license, there's two individuals on there, and these are pending background checks and, and payments of any fines owed to the city. Motion by Hackett?
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve license report number 1474. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next up is 1478. This is for a taxi cab driver, and we have one individual on there. We would need a motion to approve.
Approve, I move to approve. Whatever said that.
Okay. Motion by Mayo, second by Fair, that we approve license report 1478. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Then we're on 1475, and this is also, these are renewals for taxi cab drivers, and there's a number of individuals on there. We'd be looking for a motion to approve that.
Move to approve license report number 1475.
Second.
We have motion by Olson, and second by Hackett, that we approve of the license report number 1475. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. 1476 is on page 257, and this has to do with the vehicle licenses, and you can see the list of the vehicles, we would need to approve those vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve, it's not that bad, Aaron, license report number 1476. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. 1477, these are dance hall permits for local premises. And we have a list there, those are on an annual basis, even though the liquor licenses are on a fiscal year. So we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve license report number 1477.
And I'll second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report 1477.
I think there's a kind of shady guy's name on there, I don't know.
Yeah, kind of wondering about that myself.
Yeah, wondering about that, mhm.
Yeah, I don't know how I ended up on there. Well, I'm not gonna pull it. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. At least it's not on there twice, I had my brother sign the other one. Okay. Next, we have that addendum, remember, that came out yesterday or Friday, I can't remember, Friday, I think it came out, and Sandy, you want to just explain that one?
Every other year, we are expected to have council approve the election inspectors, inspectors that we use. The two major political parties have until November 30th of the odd number year to get us a list. If we receive no list, which I did not receive from either party, then I'm presenting you, my workers that I have, that are trained and that I've used for last year and the year before. So they just need your approval.
Okay, so you can see the list of individuals on page three. So we would need a motion to approve this election of inspectors. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Peterson, that we approve the list of unaffiliated election inspectors and appoint them for 2020, 21 election cycle. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next up, then we have the number 10, which is our section where we have issues and projects discussions, and Aaron had asked to speak tonight, so, Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and this kind of dovetails off of what Mr. Pritchardski said at the end of the last meeting, when we passed the budget, Mr. Pritchardski shed some light on all the good things that have been happening over the past X amount of years, and just wanted to put a few slides together, so it'll only take about five to seven minutes, I think I don't have more than five or six slides, so wanted to shed some light on the financial progress of the city, and really, I want to commend a lot of people. I want to commend the finance department for their work and Kathy's work, I want to commend all city councils in that time period for their work with the budgets and, and planning, and then I also want to commend all city staff, as every budget is not just a byproduct of the finance department, but the city staff, department heads, and everyone who works within those budgets. So I'll just kind of hit the ground running here. I'm gonna touch on really three things. I want to keep this pretty thirty-thousand-foot level, but I just want to throw a couple graphics up, just to give an idea of kind of where we've been in the last five years and where we're trending and where we're headed. So that first thing is that fund balance. You can see here from 2014 to 2018, the fund balance numbers, and then the percentage against our fund balance policy. So you can see the total fund balance numbers at year's end, from 2014 to actually 18 there, and the percentage is, now, let me just talk a little bit about the minimum, our fund balance policy states that we need to have a minimum of fifteen percent of our annual expenditures on hand, and that range is fifteen to twenty-five percent. So I'm gonna show that in a little bit of a graph form here. So the blue line is the minimum, that's that fifteen percent of expenditures, and the orange line is that, is that twenty-five percent. You can see our fund balance has been pretty healthy in 2014, and then really throughout the top. It's either been through the top of that, or it's been over the, the top of that minimum, that twenty-five percent, right now it's at about thirty-one percent. You know, you may ask, why, why are we above the policy? Well, you know, something Kathy and I talked about, something I talked with Mayor Smith about today, is when we put budgets together, we budget for worst-case scenario, so it's not, you know, sometimes we budget conservatively on revenue numbers, we'll budget for really bad snow years, or kind of some expenses that you don't always see. So this is really what we like to see, is staying around the top of that policy. Now, if, if we take this and extend it out three or four years, and you see that gray line continue to go up, which is our actual fund balance, you know, then we might have a conversation and say, okay, are we being maybe a little too conservative, because we're overshooting our policy a little bit in, in what we're doing budgeting? Now, those are good conversations to have, because then we can talk about, you know, providing services, and more services to our, to our community members. So I just wanted to give you an idea of, of where we've been in relation to our policy in that time period. This next slide, and this is the next thing I want to just touch on, is tax rate trends. Obviously, this is something everyone pays attention to, and I can tell you that the, the past five years, we've been headed in the right direction, which I don't, is not a surprise to you guys. But you can see in 2014, our, our tax rate was 1026 for the city of Opaque. It has gone down each and every year since then, and we are currently looking at 957. The lines there on the far right, if you can see them, just are representative of, of kind of each taxing jurisdiction's trends over those years, and some are up and down, and back down again, and back up again, and overall, you can see the total has kind of been trending down here as of late. You can see ours has consistently been on that downward path since 2014, so I think there's something to be said for that consistency. This one's harder to read than I was hoping. This is TIFs, this is another kind of thing I wanted to touch on, so closing our TIF districts and adding value to the tax roll at a much faster rate than maybe once was anticipated, and I think the total amount of years speaks to this, but what you can see is each TIF is on the left there, and then it has the original termination date in the next column, and then it has the projected closure. You can see two of the TIFs have closed already, TIF seven and TIF five, with closure dates of 2017 and 2018, and you can see the projected closures for the TIF, the other TIF districts there. When you add them all up on the, all those years on the right-hand side, that's a total of thirty-eight years of, of really early closures in our TIF districts, which is, that's pretty good. Anyway, let me go back for a second. Right now, there's currently eighty-one million dollars of value in those TIF districts, and you know, the earlier we can close that, those out, they're, they're going on the tax roll. So what do the early closures mean for our city? And I don't want to project this out too far, but we can project it out the next couple of years. So 2019, you can see our tax rate right there at that 957, as we talked about. 2020, in the scenario that TIF three closes, you can see, and let me pull. Sorry. Okay, well, it's at about, just below 920. 2021, as we move another year forward, if TIF three and TIF six closes, we're looking at just above 860, and then if we have TIF three, six, nine, and 10 close in 2021, that same year, we're looking at a full dollar, so from 957 to 857 in the matter of a couple years, as, as far as our tax rate. Now, this is assuming, obviously, all of the same scenarios as, as we're in now, but it gives you an idea of, of what it could look like in the near future. So, you know, if, if you hear taxes are high, or, or whatever from constituents, you know, I think it's important to know kind of the, the trajectory of, of where we're headed and, and what, what's happening here. So I just want to talk about the, just a couple things here. General financial direction, growing the fund balance, a consistently decreasing tax rate has been the trend, expedited TIF closures. I also wanted to talk real briefly about acquiring a AA2 bond rating, which previously, I think previous to I think previous to 2014, we did not have a bond rating. So what that's resulted in is loan interest rates lowering from about 5% to 2.5%. So that's a big deal, the amount of money that's saving when we're borrowing for capital projects. And I think maybe the most important thing to talk about while we talk about all these things is, all of this happened since 2014 without slashing budgets and slashing services to our residents. Really, there hasn't been anyone that has been laid off, there hasn't been major cuts in areas like that. I think our services have not only remained high, but, you know, we're also looking at all the things we just talked about five minutes ago, and the things we're accomplishing in this 2020 budget, including adding a PSLO, and including adding a drug officer, and that stuff is, and a 3% raise for an employee's, and that stuff is happening while continuing on this trend. So really, all I'm here to do tonight is just talk, you know, five minutes about the trend, give everyone perspective on kind of where we're at, where we're going, give credit to everyone who's been involved in that in the last five years, and that's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Aaron, can you just go back just to the one where you're showing where the tax rate, right there?
Nope, sorry.
Yeah, that one. I think it's important to note, too, that when he talks about, you know, going from the 950-something to the $8.57 amount, that's just the city portion of that. As you close TIF districts, you're also going to see a decline in our share of the county taxes, and our share of the school district taxes, our share of Fox Valley tech taxes, too. So we might save a dollar on city taxes, but we might save $2 overall. I'm just, or more.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So I think that's key.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions? Very nice, Aaron. Paul?
Where are we on repaying our city water and sewer funds, where the money is advanced to the TIF district?
So.
That's out farther.
Yeah, so those are conversations, you know, as we get to this point where we're deciding to close them, or to leave them open for another year, that question is something we can have discussions on. Obviously, we're mandated to pay the water back, and then obviously, the sewer is something we'll talk about further out than 2021. So as I understand it, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, that is being done out of TIFs that are not shown on this slide.
Correct, that's with TIFs four and eight, and that's probably three or four years out on that one.
Good question.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have, we need to go into closed session. Motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, 19.85 parent one, parent G is conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
I would make that motion.
Thank you. Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Keel, and that we go into closed session. Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ellen Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.